Okay, I'd like to call to order the Economic Development Committee. Could we have a roll call, please? Eileen?
Alderman Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Police.
Here.
Alderman Lewitan.
Present.
Alderman Shockey.
Here.
Alderman Caddella.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Coles.
Here.
Alderman Knite.
I call for the approval of the minutes of June the 12th. Any corrections? No? Then I make a motion that we approve the minutes of June the 12th, 2008. All those in favor? Any opposed? We approve of the minutes of June 12th, 2008. Okay, on the agenda for today is a hearing from the second party that's making a proposal for the economic development of the Thorndale Corridor. I'd like to ask Mr. Lee Daniels to take the floor and make his presentation.
Thank you very much. My name is Lee Daniels, Alderman, as you pointed out, and I'm delighted to be here with you today. Some of you I've talked to previously, and I'm delighted to be with you again. We are approaching, of course, the discussion on the master plan for the Thorndale Road Corridor area. And of course, this is Wooddale's today and tomorrow. And we label it that way because we think it's a great opportunity for Wooddale, for your present community, and then as the city moves forward to tomorrow's vision. And through your efforts and through the workings with your professional team, be able to develop the kind of plans that you, the stakeholders, the elected officials, and the community desires in the best interests. So with that, I'm going to go through our agenda as we cover this, and the agenda is just before that. There it is. And I will first, of course, introduce the team to you, then we'll hear about the process lifecycle, the project understanding, what is good planning, and why Lee Daniels and Associates, Business Districts, and Whiten Company, and then, of course, hold ourselves available for questions and answers. And by the way, if during the course of our presentation you have any questions of us, feel free to just jump in there and ask the questions. We'll be happy to do our best to answer them for you. So with that, of course, let me just once again reiterate that my name is Lee Daniels. I'm a licensed attorney, real estate broker specializing in commercial real estate, and through my years of experience working with municipalities and public agencies, I'm delighted to be part of a very, very effective team. Terry Jenkins of BDI is the managing director, 16 years of experience working with public, private, municipal, and real estate development, and of course, a graduate of Northern Illinois University. I might mention that Mr. Jenkins has been before you previously, having done considerable work in looking at Thorndale and the potential downtown redevelopment. So comes before you with a depth of knowledge of Wooddale and a great experience in that area. I'm also glad to present as part of the team of Whiten Company, Mr. Kevin Havens, who's a senior vice president, director of design and planning. Mr. Havens brings 30 years of experience at extensive master planning, as well as he's a licensed architect and a graduate of Harvard University. Pete Masha is with us today. He's the group president of engineering, 29 years of experience, extensive roadway experience, and a graduate of the University of Illinois. Let me just say in closing, before I turn it over to them, that once again, we're delighted to be here and, of course, look forward to working with you and hope that at the end of the day, as you listen to our presentation and able to discuss it as a consult, that you'll feel comfortable in selecting our team. So, once again, I will represent you and the stakeholder in community engagement, BDI for economic and market analyses, and that is, of course, their specialty. And Whiten Company, a company that was founded in 1939, 175 personnel, and a company that's steeped in its qualifications in DuPage County in Illinois and, of course, the Midwestern United States. This is a team that will hold a vision of Wooddale and be available to you, to work with you. You will be our client, and we hold no other loyalties than that to Wooddale itself. So with that, if I might, let me turn it over to Terry Jenkins of BDI. Terry?
Thank you, Lee. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. Pete and I would like to give you some thoughts about some macro issues as it relates to how we see the project overall. I'll kick it off, and then Pete's gonna talk, and then I'll kind of close it. We call this the process lifestyle. You can see that there are three major bars, and I want to explain a little bit about how we think about economic development, and then you'll see how the bars flow in. We think about economic development as a three-legged stool. The analogy is, a three-legged stool falls down if any one of the legs doesn't work. And the first leg of the three-legged stool is determining the market, meaning, how do developers and tenants view your community, this corridor, in terms of their ability to make money and the competition around Wooddale? Part of what we're going to do is help you get your arms around that issue, and exactly who might be interested in making money here, why, how they would go about doing it, and what that mix of business might be, in the broadest sense of retail, commercial office, and residential. Secondly, we want to understand your vision for the corridor, which may or may not be 100% consistent with how the market chooses to make money. And we'll go through a number of exercises to understand your vision, what you'd like to see here, what your citizens would like to see. That's the second leg of the stool. We're then gonna take your vision, how the market thinks they can make money, put the two together, and what's gonna come out of that is opportunity. The market thinks they're interested, you like what the market has to say within your vision, we'll discount those things that aren't within your vision. Then the third leg of the stool is, once you've done that, the market's gonna say, fine, we have a match with your vision. Where is the land that we can build the things that we can make money that achieve your vision? So the third leg of the stool is land use. And this bar talks about those pieces down through here, and what's gonna come out of our three-legged stool analysis is essentially a master plan. The opportunity analysis, the optimal land use, and then we're gonna add some things that are sort of related to your vision, and that is, what are the appearance standards that you have for this quarter? We might use the phrase, raise the bar. How would you like to raise the bar for Wooddale as to exactly the quality of what you'd like to see there? What are sustainable strategies, green strategies, to make sure that what's developed there can sustain itself and is sensitive to the environment? And then lastly, we're gonna put that all together in a strategy development and action plan. Strategy sort of speaks for itself. The term "action plan" means that in addition to creating that three-legged stool for you, meaning all the work to build the stool, build the legs, and roll it into a strategy that's can be communicated, understandable, we're then going to write a business plan that supports that strategy, that you and staff can use on a week-to-week, month-to-month basis that says, in order to achieve the strategy that we've agreed on, here is a detailed action plan to get there. And it's gonna talk about categories such as, what are the goals and objectives? What are the action steps to achieve it? How much does it cost? Where should the money come from? What are the pools of money to do it? Who should be accountable? What are the timelines to get it done? And how do you measure success annually as a group of elected officials against the strategy? Now, the interesting thing about the Thorndale Corridor is that all of our work is under the umbrella of a new road, a new treatment to the road, that has significant transportation and infrastructure issues. So by design, in this whole process, you have a quote-unquote partner, which is IDOT. And Pete is gonna talk about how we need to do our work within that umbrella of your partner so that what comes out at the back end, the three-legged stool, is not only your vision, but one that you know is workable for the plan for this corridor.
Thanks, Terry. Well, my name's Pete Masha. I run the engineering business at Whiten Company. We have a very vibrant transportation practice there, and I want to talk to you about some of the transportation issues as I see them. Yes, IDOT's embarked on a major study right now throughout your area here, about 100 square miles of the area here. And it's a tiered environmental impact statement, includes alternative analyses. You know, when they started this process, they claimed that, you know, they had a blank piece of paper, and they didn't have any bias, but they're pretty far into that right now. And I think it's pretty clear that the Thorndale Corridor is the logical corridor for the western access, but that they haven't actually selected that yet. The next major deliverable for IDOT is going to be the draft environmental impact statement, which they hope to have early next year. You may know better than I, February, maybe, 2009. And then have a recorded decision, have the whole thing done a year after that. I like the way that the timing is working out between the IDOT study and this study. You know, a draft environmental impact statement will have two or three alternatives for every issue, including the Thorndale Corridor. No more than that, I would hope. And, you know, what Thorndale is right now, it's categorized as a minor arterial. It's not likely to stay that way. It may be recommended that it's a major arterial. It may be recommended a fully access-controlled expressway. I don't know. It'll probably have a transit component on it, because it's very definitely their objective is to make this a multimodal study. But in any case, they'll have identified some alternatives, and we'll know those by the beginning of next year. Between now and then, and indeed even after then, before they go to the final alternative, there's an opportunity for some two-way dialogue. Now, you know, the city is already a stakeholder. Whiten Company is merely an observer of that. You are a stakeholder, you're at the table. They have to listen to you right now. So, if we're selected, as we would be going through this study, it would be great to be able to bring some of our ideas, the strategies for development, as they may impact some of these alternatives, bring those to the table and say, this is what the city would prefer. Likewise, as IDOT goes through the process, I'd look forward to bringing their thoughts back to you so we can understand the impacts. Anyway, very dynamic moment for Wooddale with IDOT going through this study. I guess the last thing I'd like to leave you with is, we do a lot of transportation business with the transportation agencies that are involved in this. We do a lot of business with IDOT, with the Tollway, with DuPage DOT, with the CTA, with Metro. We know them all, they know us very well. But we're not involved in the IDOT study at all, other than as an observer. We weren't involved with the DuPage DOT feasibility study. We've got no conflict of interest, we've got no master other than the city of Wooddale. We really look forward to representing your interests with the transportation agencies as we go through this study.
Thank you, Pete. Steve has up on the screen, we've done some blue-sky thinking about what opportunities might fall out that represent the major components of the strategy. We're not gonna go through those now. We're gonna give you a computerized stick that will allow you to look at what our blue-sky thoughts are. And then he has a second slide that talks about what we think some of the key challenges are gonna be, and you can read those at your leisure. I think, as I move quickly to the middle and end bar, first, a comment on the closure of the first bar. We are 100% focused on what you want out of the scope, which is the Thorndale Corridor. However, because of our backgrounds and some knowledge that we have about the community, we feel that we want to comment in the study, the relationship between this corridor, the Wooddale Road Corridor, and its connectivity to the downtown, because we think there'll be very different kinds of development on Wooddale, excuse me, on Thorndale than there might be on Wooddale and there might be downtown. We think it would be helpful to you to understand how the development will be different, how the land uses will be different, and how the revenue issues will be different from those corridors, to help you think about a macroeconomic plan for your community in terms of property tax revenue that's commercially oriented and sales tax revenue. So we will be commenting on that as a sidebar on the basic scope. You can see that we intend to do all of that during a 12-month period. The middle talks about marketing. We think about marketing in two ways. The first is that, once the master plan is done, you're gonna want to tell the world that you have a master plan. And so, you're gonna want to do it internally, and we've listed a number of meetings you want to do, and you're gonna want to do it externally with developers and tenants and IDOT and others. We're gonna set up a document and a process for you that allows you to do that, what we would call short-term marketing. And I'm calling it that because, remember, when you get here, you don't necessarily have land control, so you're not really ready to talk to a developer, because you've got a number of property owners who have land control. And secondly, you may or may not have the final decision from IDOT as to exactly how that land is gonna be configured based on their final decisions. Nor do you know exactly, probably, when IDOT is actually gonna do that construction and when those parcels will be available in the way that the strategy says they might be. So this will allow you to get your foot in the door and begin saying, look what is happening in Wooddale, and look at the opportunities that are coming. We will then write, as part of this, an implementation plan, which is sort of related to this action plan, that says, when you are ready, and you'll be ready to go as soon as we're done, but when you're ready to talk about land uses, when you finish the conversation with landowners, when IDOT has finalized what they're going to do, then you'll really be ready, then you're gonna be ready to go out to the marketplace through a variety of means that we've outlined here, RFQs, RFPs, others. And we're going to provide you a toolbox, for lack of a better term, that says, in order for you to maximize the opportunities that you're now ready to go in the two, three, four, five-year period, in terms of actual development, these are the tools that will help you do that. Could be different zoning, it could be financial tools like TIF and SSA, it could be a different development review process than you might use now. It could be all of those things, that's to be determined with you while we're doing this phase. And this is the phase where you'll actually be out building it. And how long that will take depends a lot on primary issues of land control and IDOT, and your interest in how fast you want to move. So that's pretty much how we define the process lifecycle, and I'm gonna turn it over to Kevin, who's gonna talk a bit about planning.
Terry, thank you, and good evening. I'm Kevin Havens, design director with Whiten Company, and I would be involved with the shaping of the master plan, thinking about the conceptual direction that Wooddale could go in. Terry talked about the lifecycle of the process here, and one of those critical components, that is the fallout of the economic and the market research that done, is a physical tool to communicate the vision for the community. And it's powerful in a couple of ways. Number one, it's certainly a way of conveying the vision to the community to build support and consensus, but also it becomes a tool to assist IDOT in their assessment of how the Thorndale Corridor or what that axis might actually be like. You can help, in effect, shape the destiny of Wooddale with the master planning tool if it's implemented early enough. We wanted to share with you some fundamental tenets that we think constitutes good planning at such an early conceptual time. First of all, perhaps it's obvious, is that this is a long-term tool. We need to look down the road as far as we can, and the farther you look in the future, granted, the murkier the crystal ball is, but fundamentally, there has to be some grand vision put in place that you can build towards, and that's why the master plan done early is important. It's kind of the down payment, if you will, on what that future concept would be and what it would look like. We are big believers in a consensus-building process. Our experience in master planning for many, many years has proven that it's an opportunity, really, to bring a wide variety of people together with many, many different interests. The more people that get involved to impact the master plan and the way it's shaped, how it looks, the way the community will feel, builds that ambassadorship towards people getting on board and seeing it through. There's some fundamental things I want to share with you that are perhaps a bit broad, but I think that setting the bar high at this point is important. I think there's fundamentally a quality of life issue at stake for Wooddale, and the kind of plans that are put together that are certainly born from the market and the economic analysis also is gonna set the stage for what this town is gonna feel like in the future, and the attractiveness for people who want to live here, to conduct business here, to raise their families. And I think the master plan along Thorndale is a big component in how that stage is set. The idea of creating a sense of community goes right along with that. It's a community, certainly of residents, but it's a business community as well. And as people build pride and make decisions about investing their lives here, the master plan's gonna be a big component in ensuring that. And finally, I think there's an important opportunity with regards to identity. As people pass through Wooddale, there can be a real sense that this is a very thoughtful place, that there was some strategic thinking put in place when the town came together. And the Thorndale Corridor being such a thoroughfare is going to have that opportunity. And we're gonna share some thoughts with you in just a moment. But finally, this idea of having a consistent message and a cohesive plan is what's gonna make this whole endeavor a serious one. And Terry talked a little bit about the whole marketing phase and the implementation, what the master plan puts in place at the very beginning will go a long way to selling the idea, in fact. We wanted this evening to share with you some impressions about the Thorndale Corridor. And obviously, at this early stage, there are no solutions, but there might be possibilities. And so we were interested in your reaction to some of these early conceptual thoughts. What's on the screen is a simple aerial photograph with a diagram of that Thorndale Corridor moving through, with some critical crossing points that we see at Salt Creek, Wooddale, and Route 83. And the dashed line that just came up on the screen is just the right-of-way that passes through along with Thorndale, with the south being that open parcel of land for the development of the transportation corridor. We wanted to focus this evening on three particular nodes that we think are worthy of raising some interesting possibilities and seeing what you might think about some of this. As we've come through town to take a look at this area, it struck us that you have a tremendous opportunity with the threshold coming from the west across Salt Creek. There's a real asset there that you might consider developing in time that could very much affect the quality of life and the identity issue of the community. And we've putting up on the screen some impression pictures that are real places where a simple stream or creek through a community became a nature reserve, an opportunity for families and kids to gather, doing simple things like bridging structures, pavilions, passive recreational activities is something that could make what now is perhaps an underutilized corridor to be something really special and be a characteristic of the Wooddale community. So it's just a thought about various things that could happen. There's all sorts of examples. These particular pictures came from the Coffee Creek Nature Center in northwest Indiana, but there are certainly many, many iterations. The DuPage, branch of the DuPage River going through Naperville is another example, perhaps a little more urban, but taking advantage of a natural asset and make it a wonderful place to be. So it's really just for your consideration not to overlook a interesting intersection that's actually with a creek. Well, moving eastward, we want to talk about what is probably the primary, the most important intersection, which is Wooddale Road and Thorndale. And there are some wonderful examples that we're kind of putting up on the screen, and they're labeled here, so you perhaps have visited some or all of these locations. And it's the kind of thing that struck us, that there's an opportunity here that would maybe make this a destination retail kind of environment as a possibility, something where people from inside or outside the community would come with the purpose of shopping there or doing business in some way in a very high-quality kind of setting. And none of these are trying to set the architectural standard, so there's a variety of things that could happen, but there is a certain sense of quality, and that intersection, I think, in time, could certainly convey that and be a real crossing point for the Wooddale community. Completing, traversing to the eastern side of the village at Route 83, this intersection might have an entirely different kind of feel, something pitched more towards professional office or some larger destinations such as a cinema complex or even a conferencing kind of center, different than what the Wooddale intersection might have, but be a solid bookend, if you will, to the other side of the community. The connection points in between those three nodes, I think, are just as important, and that's really the link that's gonna sew things together. And it might include some substantial green space or be developed in terms of office or industrial, you know, there's a lot of opportunity. But conveying that experience of moving through the Wooddale Corridor, Thorndale Corridor, is something that you want to think very, very carefully about, and the master plan would be a tool to be able to set that vision. We'd be remiss to forget about the importance of planning any of this without thinking about your downtown center, and we recognize that that's not part of the direct assignment. But the corridor, the intersection at Wooddale, is a wonderful opportunity to set up a connection point that could lead to a development of downtown sometime in the future. And there's a wonderful opportunity, I think, with the scale of the downtown area that could put in place, wonderful examples of how perhaps centering around a redeveloped metro station, there could be a pedestrian-oriented downtown experience with shops and restaurants that would be a complement to draw traffic off of Thorndale and make the downtown area a vibrant place to be and a wonderful place to live close to. So many, many opportunities there that can be set up by doing the intersection at Wooddale and Thorndale with those opportunities. So we wanted to leave you this evening with an example, a comparison, of how the very process that Terry walked you through has actually, in the past, led to the realization of a master plan. Whiten Company was involved over 10 years ago with the University of Illinois Chicago campus, Chicago Circle campus. And they had developed, they asked us to develop a master plan of an entire region, which used to be the old Maxwell Street neighborhood. Perhaps many of you have been down in this part of town. And if you can think back a decade ago about what that environment was like and what it is today, that's the direct result of this kind of a process, of a careful market analysis and economic research, and then a physical master plan that identified a combination of uses, everything from for-sale housing in townhomes and condominiums to park environments. It had recreation involved, there was retail and professional office, and of course, academic structures, which is what the university is all about. What became kind of a no-man's-land was turned into an around-the-clock neighborhood, a very, very healthy environment. Now, certainly, this is a very, this is a more urban example, but the point we're showing is that the plan that's put in place is something that can be acted on, and everything you see here was actually a direct result of following a master plan vision. There are many architects and designers involved in the realization of this, but the plan that was put together initially was something that resulted 10 years later in this kind of development. So we are very, very proud to be part of that and wanted to illustrate the power of putting a good plan in place initially. So at this point, I want to hand it back to Lee.
Thank you, Kevin, and thank you, Terry, and Pete. And we hope that as we've walked you through this whole process, planning, strategy, action, marketing, implementation, that you will see our vision for Wooddale today and tomorrow. We know, of course, of the pride that you have in your community, and we bring to you a sense of pride in the work that we do. And for that reason, we're looking at many different opportunities, whether it be a choice for retail businesses, commercial business, industrial, travelers, residents, or developers. Wooddale has a tremendous opportunity at this point in time. And I would say to you that, when you make the decision as to whom to select, to represent you, to be your partner, we would ask that you consider the fact that we are an independent representative of Wooddale's interest and only Wooddale's interest. We would develop a proactive rather than a reactive plan, assist you with achieving ownership over your future, and an integrated real estate design and planning team, we bring to you the qualifications and the background in order to accomplish the desired result. We know that as you look forward to the future with your vision for what's good for Wooddale, that it's important for us, on my part, to help build that consensus in the marketing and the communication with the community as a whole, stakeholders, and of course, you as elected officials. With the great sophisticated market and economic analysis of BDI, we know that you will have the economic tools that you will need to consider the direction to take. And of course, with the master planning experience of Whiten Company and the in-depth knowledge that they have, not only of the master plan itself, but also the work that they have done, such as University Village and University of Illinois and downtown Chicago and throughout the region, this brings to you a strength of partnership and a strength of character. So we thank you very much for the opportunity to be with you tonight, and of course, we're available to answer whatever questions
available to answer whatever questions that you have of us. So Alderman, thank you very much for the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daniels. I'll just ask you, if you could continue to build on what you said. Terry Jenkins pointed out that you would come up with a detailed action plan, and you just made the comment that you're looking to create an integrated real estate plan. And it reminded me of a statement that was said last week by the other party that's interested in this job, and that was that land value is related to land use. Would you make a comment upon how these three sentences, in a global sense, come together? Your detailed action plan, which involves integrating, which has an integrated real estate plan, how that will affect land values as related to land use?
Mr. Jenkins?
Thank you, Lee. I'd be happy to do that. The strategy and the action plan is going to talk about potential uses on Thorndale that relate to your vision. Your vision is going to have, let's just say generically, retail orientation, perhaps an office orientation, perhaps an improved industrial orientation, if a piece of that stays continuing going forward, perhaps a hotel-convention orientation. I guess theoretically, even perhaps a residential orientation, higher density, higher market-rate residential orientation, although that's difficult to talk about in 2008, as part of mixed-use development. And I think the key is mixed use along this corridor, that these kinds of uses need to be integrated. And once those land-use opportunities have been determined, which is gonna be a combination of what you want, what the landowners on that corridor are willing to partner with you to do, and you're gonna have to structure partnerships where they see that working with you enhances the land value for their land ownership, separate from whatever land you might acquire. IDOT's umbrella, which is gonna affect land use, because access is going to be a key issue, particularly for retail and hotel along that corridor, and IDOT's gonna have a lot to say about access. That's all then gonna relate, create a picture that's gonna relate to the marketplace and what they do, and as I said, how they make money. Your question about land value, most people start with the cost of the land as the key driving issue, and then you figure out what you can do after you've paid for the land.